I see everybody sits in the back like usual. Nobody wants to sit in the front.
Think this is a church?
So we have two public hearings tonight. We also have on the agenda, public comments. Is there anyone that is here this evening who would like to talk to us about something that is not already on the agenda? Because we would love to talk with you.
We talked to them? I thought they just talked to us.
No, it's not tough love. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move right on to item number 3A. And this is a request for a continuance to February's, well, we're already there.
Twenty-seventh.
Yes, February 7th.
It's twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, yes. AN-160004 slash ZC-16001, annexation and zone change of 35.65 acres north of Holcomb Boulevard. And the staff report will be given by Laura.
Thank you very much. The city received an application for an annexation. After we deemed it complete, there was a modification to that application to include a zone change. With that, you'll see a revised staff report that reflects a modified application. We have not done that yet, so at this point, there is no staff report. So because of that, we're requesting a continuance of the application. What I would suggest is that the commission accept public testimony and then close the public hearing portion, but leave the public comment period open and continue this item until February 27th.
That's a good question.
Yes.
So you said, because this was including a zone change?
It does include a zone change now. Originally, it was just an annexation.
So, the last time we were discussing that annexation for Beaver Creek, there was no zone change. So some annexations come in with zone changes and some do not.
Some have zones in place. So when they come into the city, they are automatically have to be rezoned. In Beaver Creek, those areas don't have implementing zoning yet. We haven't adopted the scheme.
Okay.
So they cannot be rezoned yet because we don't have the zoning.
So there's two different types of annexations?
There's two different-
Ones with, ones without.
Because of the nature of the lands we have in the city.
Okay, just wanted to understand that. Okay, thanks.
All right. Well, we are very interested in hearing what you have to say this evening. Since we are not reading the public hearing procedures, I would like to just ask on behalf of the commissioners that if you have something to say and somebody else says the same thing, you can just come up and say, "I agree with whatever the other person said." We hope that you will be cognizant of the fact that there are criteria and standards and address your testimony to that. It makes it really helpful for us. We are very glad, again, as I said, to have you here this evening. It's nice when we have people in the audience. And we appreciate it. So thank you for taking your time and coming out this evening.
Do you want to explain how the timer works?
Yes, I was just gonna say-
Oh, yes. Laura, would you like to explain how the timer works?
In accordance with our procedures, we have a three-minute public comment period. Unless you're with a neighborhood association, then it's 15. If you're speaking on behalf of the neighborhood association. So with this, we have timers that'll be there for you. They'll have three buttons on them, green, and then yellow when you're getting close, and then red after it hits the three-minute timing. And this is something that we will be doing at all planning commission hearings now on with our new chair.
To clarify, so will we be accepting comments tonight? And will we also be accepting comments on the 27th?
Yeah, and written comments in between, too.
Okay.
So we're just closing the hearing, but keeping that comment period open.
For those who aren't here this evening.
Yeah.
Because I think some people got confused about the continuance, thinking, "Oh, we don't need to show up because there's not going to be any comment period." Some heard that.
So it's up to the planning commission to decide if you'd like to take comment or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think at this point, we're not going to make that decision as of this point.
Right.
I mean, you never know. Things come up sometimes during a meeting that hasn't been specifically addressed by people, and they may want to. So I think at this point, we'll keep it open.
And just to recognize that since we don't have a staff report, we wouldn't be commenting back on any of that comment or responding.
You do have to come up here to talk. I apologize.
Just a clarification.
Sure.
What's the difference between a hearing and a comment period, then? I mean, what's the hearing?
The comment period is part of a hearing.
And what's added to a comment period that makes it a hearing? I'm just confused, I guess.
We are having a public hearing tonight where we're going to take testimony from everyone who's here and wishes to testify. At the end of this hearing, we're going to close this public hearing on this matter, but the record remains open, which means if you would like to submit something in writing that you would like the planning commission to review tomorrow, you can do that.
Well, he won't be reviewing it tomorrow.
If you would like to, and we are going to come back on the 27th of February, and we're going to do this all again. We're going to take testimony from everybody who's here. We're going to take written testimony. The planning commission's going to review it. So when I say the public, when we say the public hearing's going to close, it means the proceedings for tonight are going to end. But the record remains open, the decision is not made, and the planning commission will continue to hear from people who wish to testify.
And I think, well, I think I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I do, too.
The difference between a hearing and a comment. Normally, in a full-fledged hearing, there would be a staff report. Then the person bringing the issue forward would speak, and they would have some time to say, "This is what we tend to do, blah, 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 blah." And then there'd be some questioning. Then the public would comment on that. Then the applicant would get a chance to rebut any of that. After that, we would close the hearing, we would do our deliberation, and then come to a decision. That isn't necessarily all going to happen in one night, but that's the process of a hearing on an item. So at this point, because they've asked for a continuance, nobody's doing any of their report stuff. They're going to do that on the 27th. But a lot of people came here tonight expecting a chance to talk, so we're going to let them have that opportunity. It will become part of the record as if they were here on the 27th. And then they'll, you know, maybe not have to come on the 27th because of something else happening, whatever it may be.
Or they may want to come on the 27th.
Or they could come and potentially say it all over again. But please don't, when we have this many people, and even at three minutes, we're looking at an hour and a half's worth of testimony here. But that's what the, we're just cutting the comment portion out of the hearing so that everybody who took their time can have that opportunity.
So the thing that I said first after I opened the meeting, we have an item on the agenda every meeting, that if it's not currently on the agenda, you can come up and talk to us about it. So let's say you're concerned about speeding in Oregon City. It's not on our agenda. You can come in and say, "Guess what? I'd like you to take a look at that. I know you have a transportation master plan, and how are you going to address that?" And then we will probably turn that over to John and ask our public works director and ask him about that. So that's what that portion is. So that's sort of, anything else you want to talk about, except items 3A and 3B, is available in that setting.
So then there, like you're saying, there's comments then through the 27th, and you'll be doing this?
Well, there's going to be another meeting on the 27th, so if you want to come back on the 27th and add something else to your testimony, we would certainly appreciate it.
There'd be some kind of a staff report available to look at then before then?
Yes, yes.
Something to comment on?
Yes, seven days prior to the public hearing. So that'll be, what, about the 20th? You'd say, somewhere in there?
Yes.
Depending on whether that's on a weekend or not.
So it'll be the, it'll be, as a minimum, they're required to be available seven days in advance. They're posted on our website, www.orcity.org under agendas. You can go onto the planning commission agenda and see the staff report and all supplemental material with that as well.
It'll be like a blue highlighted line, and you click on it, and then boom, it opens up.
Yes, I've been there and stopped trying to-
Most time it opens up.
Find it.
Almost all the time it opens. Yeah. So does that help?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so, yeah.
And just tell us what your name is for the record.
Oh, Mike Zalco.
Okay.
It's good for us to explain to everybody, as well as those on TV watching. So your question was a good question.
Yes.
And it helps us explain the process.
It's hard to comment on something when you don't have a report to comment on.
True.
Right, so you can-
Which is why it'll be open again.
Comment generally.
So by the way, when you want to make a comment, there's forms at the back that Denise has some, and you just fill out a comment card that you'd like to come up and make a comment about one of these particular items. It's as easy as that.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
All right. Any other procedural questions that anybody has about how the process works? Because we're happy to explain it. That's partially what we're here for. Okay, thank you so much. Are we ready to roll?
Sure.
Yes, I don't know if the applicant wanted to speak before your public testimony.
The applicant's, because I don't, I don't know if the applicants are here, but applicant's representative has filled out a form. Michael?
Good evening, Chairman Griff, members of the planning commission. My name is Michael Robinson. I'm a land use attorney representing the applicant. We did ask for a continuance to the 27th, and I'll explain to you very quickly why we did that. We have a, we've hired a traffic consultant to prepare a traffic impact analysis. We're coordinating with John Replinger, the city's transportation engineer, and the Oregon Department of Transportation. The traffic impact analysis is done in draft form. It's out to John and the Oregon Department of Transportation to review and comment. We think we'll have their comments midweek. We'll submit the final TIA to the planner handling this matter, Mr. Walter, later this week. That lets him write a staff report, as you've just explained to those who are here tonight. Then you'll have all the evidence and information that you need, and we'll come back and do the real hearing on the 27th. So we appreciate your time tonight. We appreciate that folks have come out tonight. We'll listen to what they have to say, and if they have questions or comments, we'll make sure we address them on the 27th. And Chairman Griff, that's all I have for this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, this is a real public hearing as well, as opposed to the one next time?
The other one's the full hearing.
Yes, it's a fuller hearing. And for the record, a TIA is a traffic impact analysis. So we will try not to use too many initials, because I know sometimes we do not all speak the same language.
Exactly.
TIA could mean many things for other people instead of that particular item. Okay. Kim Crum, come on up, please. And just for the record, since I already said your name, but just say your name for the record.
My name is Kim Crum. I live in Barlow Crest. It's off of Holcomb Boulevard, very close to where the property in question is. And I have a bit of a cold, so excuse me if I sound a little funny or can't spit out what I really want to say.
May I quickly ask, on Barlow Crest, are you up against the property? Are you somewhere in the middle of Barlow Crest?
In the middle.
Okay, thanks.
My major concern, I have several, but my major concern is traffic. So I'm glad that they're doing a traffic study. I do also understand that whoever is hired by somebody to do a traffic study could have bias towards that person that hired them. So does Oregon City, are they going to do their own traffic analysis to?
It's submitted to our traffic engineer for review.
Okay, good.
Yeah, but no, we don't do our own independent traffic analysis. He reviews what is-
Their analysis?
Yes.
Okay. As someone who lives on Holcomb, and I've been around to many neighbors, all of us agree that already, right now, we have a significant traffic backup on Holcomb Boulevard to go down the hill, to hook onto Redland Road, to get on that short section of Redland to get onto 213. It will take you several cycles of the light onto 213 just to get out of your neighborhood. And my concern is adding all these homes, the potential development, and the reason for the zone change is so they can build houses, that that will reduce our livability where we currently live. Schools is another issue. The school is already at capacity, so all these kids coming in, are they going to come at me with a bond measure and go, "Oh, guess what? The school's too small. We need you guys to raise your taxes on yourselves so we can build a bigger school." I don't believe that existing residents of where we are should bear the burden of having more houses built. If the developer can figure out a way to get rid of our traffic problem and not add to the problem, if the schools can come up with a plan that we don't have to raise our own taxes to build a bigger school, and Holcomb is not a very safe road. It's skinny two-lane. It was designed as a country road. It wasn't designed for a high volume of traffic. So how to mitigate that is the other question that I'm concerned about. That's it for now.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. So Chris and Bryce Borish, you guys want to come up at the same time?
Oh, no way.
Okay, sorry. I know you don't like him, but it's-
No, we have totally different, we-
Okay, Chris.
Sorry, I didn't mean to want to make you sit together.
No, I'm sorry.
What was the name?
Chris.
My name is Chris Borish, and I live in Barlow Crest. And I am affected by, we did receive a notice from you, I don't know, November, concerning the zoning change, the annexation. I, first of all, want to thank you for explaining the topics and the legality of everything, because it's very difficult as a commoner to sit down and read all that information on there. I was trying to read Pete Walters' recommendation today, and I couldn't tell if I was supposed to be here or not tonight, so I came anyway. So my urge to you is to, is to maybe break it down a little bit for us, because I understand that there are certain ways that you have to deliver it, but, you know, not all of us live that 24/7. I want to also read your mission statement as city commissioners. A sustained, healthy community-
We're not city commissioners, you know that.
Well, but you're part of the commissioners that have to do with the city. So if you're in the planning and you're going to bring residents into our city, you have to abide by the vision and the mission statement that is in your pamphlet that is in the back here. You know, it says, "To sustain healthy community that promotes safety, economic, opportunity, livability, environmental, and uniqueness." There's nothing about putting a zone change in that area. First of all, there is no sidewalks there. They had, they had to have a person come out and drain the water when we got the rains the last couple of weeks, because the water was coming down and was going nowhere. There's no sidewalks. There's two blind curbs after you make the turn by Holcomb School. The first one, you can't even see. If you're, if you're behind a bus and you're coming up Holcomb, if there's a bus stopped on where Holcomb School turns into, you can't see that bus until you've turned the corner and you're right there. And there's no way of seeing through that. The people coming from Oakview Terrace, they can't even get out of their neighborhood in the morning because of the traffic coming down Holcomb. They can't even see because there's a big, there's a big bump that goes over that. Why would you punch through a development there? I just don't understand it. I mean, I'm not about, I'm not about having a development to come in. I'm not. I'm not, as opposed to development. What I want is safe living. I want the kids in our neighborhood to be able to walk down Holcomb, not to have a, I don't know, 300-foot space, but there's no sidewalks, and they're out, and they can't see coming up the road. I love living in Oregon City. I've moved to, I moved here in 1978 from Hawaii. So, you know, I had big expectations of Oregon. Oregon City is a great community. Let's not turn into Portland, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to be like my old stompy grounds in Sawood. All they've got are big buildings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bryce Borish?
Yeah, my name is Bryce Borish. I live in Oregon City. I also live in Barlow Crest subdivision.
And you know that other lady that was just up here, right?
Yes, I do, I do.
All right. She was kind of disavowing your gnaw at your self there. I was a little, getting a little concerned.
Okay. I wanted to elaborate on a couple, a couple points have already been made, one about traffic. And I also drive a school bus for Oregon City School District. And one of my routes is on Holcomb Boulevard, and I drive it every day. And in a, probably a quarter mile to a half-mile stretch, I have about 35 students that I pick up, and I make six stops in that area, right, going on that blind curve. And I probably have at some times, especially if you add it to the garbage day, I have 25 to 30 cars behind me. There are very few spots for me to pull over and let cars pass. And so it's very hard for people to enter Holcomb Boulevard, and there's very few places, there's no place for me to pass it, or there's no place for anybody to pass me, because it's a double yellow line all the way down. But I just wanted to say that I also travel through 213 and Beaver Creek every day, about eight times a day with my bus. The intersection of 213 and Redland Road, I go through multiple times a day. And I kind of, I kind of cross my fingers when I go through those intersections, because 213 and Beaver Creek Road is, sometimes it'll take me, from the high school past 213, it'll take me at least 10 minutes to get through there. So that's a real congested area, and I don't know how this additional traffic is going to be handled on those intersections. Another thing about the schools, delivering students to those schools, I know Holcomb Elementary School is already at full capacity. I don't know how you're going to put any more kids in there. I know that Ogden Middle School has got temporary buildings. They're modular type, whatever you call them, manufactured buildings, and they're not even in a real building. So, again, I don't know how you're going to put more students in there. And this is not the only subdivision that you're planning for this area. There are other subdivisions that are going in there with more houses. We're talking hundreds of houses. Another thing I'd like to point, make a point of, I don't understand why we are not, this annexation is not being voted on by the residents of Agamis County or Oregon City.
Okay, we'll explain that.
Well, if you're going to explain Senate Bill 1573, that doesn't require you to accept this application without a vote. And I just think that this should be up for a vote, because the Oregon City Charter says that you guys, land adjoining Oregon City City limits should be annexed by a vote. So I would like to see the residents get a chance to vote on this. Thank you.
We appreciate that, but please, no clapping. Thank you. So, we appreciate it. Troy, I'm going to try to pronounce your last name. I think it's supposed to be L-A-V-O-I-E, right?
It's not pronunciation.
No, but how do you pronounce it?
Well, if you were in France, it would be-
Lavoie.
Lavoie? Lavoie, okay. Oh, I love it, okay.
Since we're not in France, it's-
Mr. Lavoie, if you please.
I live in Barlow Crest.
It's awesome.
I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on Bryce's point and the point Kim Crum made. 135 houses, I don't need a traffic report or a 10-page document to tell you that's 5,500 feet a car. 135 cars leaving at 6:00 in the morning is a little over a mile and a tenth of traffic, one trip. People come back. That's two trips. It's 2.2 miles of traffic. All those people take their kid to school, they come home. Some people have two cars and two jobs. Those families, so you can automatically go to four miles of traffic. At lunchtime, getting off of 213, excuse me, off of Beaver Creek onto 213, you can sit that light six times. From there to the highway, you can sit there for 15 minutes. If you guys don't do something about the traffic, I don't know why you want to put houses up there. I'm 100 feet from one of the access points to this new neighborhood. My kids ride down that hill. I don't need four, four miles worth of cars going through that street, especially when it's got a 90-degree corner at the end. We're at the back of the city. We're at the urban growth boundary. We picked that spot for a reason. It's quiet. Four miles of car isn't going to make it quiet. So it's really all I got. I want you guys to think about that. Holcomb, you guys keep thinking about it as a, as a street. It is truly a country lane, but with this many houses, it's going to turn into something more like Sunnyside Boulevard. So unless you guys are ready to spend that kind of money, I mean, that's, that's a lot of rework. I mean, it's just barely two lanes right now. It's insufficient. So come take a drive, come take a drive in the afternoon and see what it looks like. And then think about four freight trains a mile long going down that hill, because that's really what you're talking about. It's about four miles of traffic with 130 cars. You figure what you're looking at. I would just assume that you guys put all that together. Thanks for the time. Thanks for having us out today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume you were an operations specialist?
Pardon me?
Your insignia?
My baby brother, every time he signs up, they give him a new coat. He asks me what size I was. It's a damn warm coat.
Probably, probably needed it. Mr. LaSalle from the Park Place Neighborhood Association.
And just for purposes of timing-
That's from somebody else.
Okay, thank you.
Are you speaking for the neighborhood association?
Yes, ma'am.
So you have 15 minutes? All right. Thank you.
I'm going to give you something. Well, my name is Bob LaSalle. I live here in Oregon City. And I'm going to give you something that you can sink your teeth into.
Is it candy?
You wish. I'm going to read it so I get everything right. The applicant states on page nine of the annexation narrative that, quote, "The future development of the property will not have any significant impact upon the economic, social, and physical environment of the community," unquote. We disagree. Chapter 14, point 04, point 060, point A, point 3, and point 7 of the Oregon City Municipal Code states, quote, "When reviewing a proposed annexation, the commission shall consider the following factors as relevant. Point 3, adequacy and availability of public facilities and service to service potential development." I emphasize, "potential development." Point 7, lack of any significant adverse effects on the economic, social, and physical environment of the community by the overall impact of the annexation," unquote. On page 5 of the annexation narrative, the applicant states, quote, "The schools serving this site are Holcomb Elementary School, Ogden Middle School, and Holcomb Elementary School," unquote. He further states that discussions with the school district staff indicate that there are no capacity problems with these schools," unquote. Well, I suppose if there were two Holcomb Elementary Schools, there wouldn't be a problem. But in my discussions with the school district just two weeks ago, I can see a problem with the potential of 124 new dwellings at that site, and I figured it out just the way it's supposed to be figured. And I figured these figures are 10 zoning. 124 new dwellings, there is a potential of 99 new students at Holcomb Elementary School. That school has a capacity of 564 students with a current enrollment of 488 students. That school will not be overcrowded. It'll be beyond capacity. On top of that, add the potential of 230 more students from the anticipated dwellings from future developments, either already approved or anticipated. And you can see, we are close to failing our students. That development would also produce 1,240 new daily auto trips onto Holcomb Boulevard, which is already a speed-prone route with a sharp curve at school road, and will certainly add to the already heavy congestion at Highway 213 and Redland Road, and also the Holcomb-Redland Abernathy intersection. Again, getting back to anticipated dwellings from future developments, we're looking at an additional 3,360 daily trips on Holcomb Boulevard. Now, I think it's time to start looking at what the cumulative effects of all these developments will have on our infrastructure and community, not just individually. You could take each individual development on its own, and it wouldn't have much of an impact. But putting all these together, it's huge. So for these reasons, we urge you to follow the code and deny this annexation until solutions to these problems can be found. Oh, and for future reference on down the line, this property is in the Barlow Road designated corridor. this property is in the Barlow Road designated corridor, so you'll have to be dealing with that in the future also.
You mean the historic corridor, the historically designated corridor?
Yes.
Bob, does it go through that property there?
Yes, it does. Right, straight through it. Yep. I have a copy of my narrative for the record, plus the list of the new or anticipated dwellings, which I used for doing my figures for future developments, so that you... I'm showing you that I didn't just kind of pick this up out in the air. And I figured point eight students per dwelling, that's kind of cruel, point eight of a student, but what are you going to do? And 10 trips per household on the traffic part of it.
Bob, for those who are listening on TV, could you explain what the Barlow Road, I can't remember what you referred to it.
The historic corridor.
The corridor, could you explain what the meaning and the significance of that is?
Yes, there's a corridor going down through that part of Oregon City, and it ends at the Oregon Trail Interpretative Center.
Abernathy-Green.
Abernathy-Green. And it's the best-known route of the Oregon Trail that followed the Barlow Road into Oregon City. It was one of the main routes there. My wife keeps, I work very close to it, my house is very close to it. My wife wants me to get a metal detector and see if I can find some old pistols and stuff, but I tell her that if she wants to go out there and that poison oak, go for it. Not me.
So, is there some protection in place that Park Place has or the city?
Any dwellings cannot be...
Yeah, we can talk about that.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I don't know myself.
Any more questions?
Bob, can I ask you one question before you go?
Yes.
You specifically mentioned about Holcomb Elementary School. Now, it's my understanding that Park Place Elementary School is closed, but is there the possibility, I mean, just hypothetically, that students were going there at one point in time, there were two elementary schools in the area?
That is now a very active private academy. Yeah, it's a charter school.
But I'm assuming there must be some sort of a lease, but if they needed the space, they could obviously vacate it.
Yeah, in my personal opinion, it might be somewhat cruel.
Well, I understand that.
But they have a pretty good program going there, and it's advantageous to a lot of...
But Oregon City has, should have first priority, I would think. But anyway, just as an interesting note, when you mentioned that, I know that the children in the neighborhood that I live in also are being bused to Holcomb Elementary School. So, people who live in the McLaughlin neighborhood, instead of us having a neighborhood school, they get bused to Holcomb. So, it's not just...
The old school may have some earthquake problems. I don't know the legalities of that, but it's a very, very old building.
Anyway, we'll get some further information on this from the school district.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up, Bob.
Good luck.
Barbara. How nice to see you.
Nice to meet you. Barbara Rankin, Barlow Crest neighborhood, Park Place. Denise, to answer your question about the school, Alliance is part of the high school. Yeah, it's a separate academy. There's two of them, Case and Alliance.
Yeah, I'm familiar with Case.
Yeah. And it is earthquake issue that closed it down in the first place, so, but now it's open again.
There's kids in it now?
Yep.
Oh, okay. We'll ask about that.
Yep. It would be a good question. I agree with just about everything that's been said, so I won't repeat it all. My main concern that hasn't been brought up is that the 213 and the 205 is the destination area. The traffic is going to be coming down 213 from Malala and Beaver Creek, and it's going to go to the 205 and the 213. The traffic is going to come down Holcomb and end up at the same place. The traffic is going to come in from Redland, and it's going to be at the same place. I don't know how that's going to happen. I just can't imagine, because it's very crowded now. Those, that's my major concern. I agree with all the other issues that people brought up, because I think they're important. And I just don't know how, plus the flooding issues on that property. The adjacent property to this property is flooded. We are already having issues with that, so. I want to thank you for your time and thank you for...
Where's the flooding? That's a hill downhill. Where is the flooding part of it?
It's, they put a new neighborhood in behind the school. It's adjacent to this property, and it floods. If you drive through there, you'll see big puddles of water. There's retention ponds, but they...
That was the one that we had some testimony on.
Down below. Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions? Mr. Joe Novak, sir.
Hello, Joe Novak. I live on Holcomb Boulevard, right between Hunter and Swan. And we've been there a little over a year now when we bought our home. And my main concern is, what are we going to do? Well, I'm in total agreement with the traffic problems. It sounds like a racetrack coming up our hill right over there. It's just a matter of time before there's going to be another, you know, serious accident with the traffic and the speeding that goes down there. It's pretty constant and credible, but with the last two years, the amount of rain that we've had over there, when I moved into our new home over there, which was built in 99, the water started coming up my downspouts. So, then I found that my crawl space was pretty much underwater, three, four feet of water in there. I started to try to figure out what's going on here, because inspections showed no problems like that, a little water line, but everything dry. And there's absolutely no foundation drains, you know, were put in this house, no provisions at all for the water. And just approximately a month ago or so, some friends of ours that live on, I think it's Hiram, just across the road, had a new house built behind them. Now, this person just bought a brand-new home, moved into it, and their crawl space is flooding. And I'd be willing to bet if I dug down there that the people that are building these houses are not putting any kind of drain tiles in, any kind of French wells, or, you know, anything to control this water. And where's this water going to go to now that we're taking all this land surface away again? I mean, are we prepared to put in a huge deep tunnel project? Something has to be done. I mean, I feel sorry for this person that just has bought a brand-new house, is going to have to invest all this money into it again, you know, to correct the problem. So far, I've put, I mean, if I hadn't done the majority of work on my own, I've put over 30 tons of drain rock in wells in my property, and I hand-dug a complete footing drain around it, too, which none existed. So, I think there needs to be a great review of what is going on with these foundations that are being dug. I mean, how can you do that? I mean, a person's, you know, dream is to own property, to build a home, put their life savings into it and taking the risk that their jobs are going to hang on long enough for them to live there comfortably and build it up. And, you know, you're talking safety hazards, you're talking mold, you're talking the structures being unsafe. I mean, these structures are supposed to be built to take earthquakes now, but what good is that when the foundation is washing away? It's, you know, it's just redundant, you know, to let that be allowed. The building, I don't know if it's your department or the commission, but how are we allowing construction to come in and build these homes without proper provisions for the water to be drained? And I'd be willing to bet that the homes that are built over there on Swan right now that are going up, if Doug goes down right now, I bet you wouldn't find a bit of foundation drains going in there. So, here, these people are going to find the same problems happening, and all this water is just coming downhill at us. So, I find that to be just a huge disappointment in, you know, allowing construction to be done in such a shoddy manner. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions? Is there anybody else that did not fill out a little form that would like to testify? Just come on up, hand it to Trevor, and come on up, please. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Tori Lamb. I live in the same neighborhood as Kim and Chris and Bryce here and all the neighbors here. And first of all, I want to thank the opportunity to get their speak, give my testimony. My wife's here, too, and she's speak, I'm speak on behalf of her as well. One thing that hasn't been brought up at all is, you live up on our hill. Except Park Place Park, there's no parks. There's no place for the kids to play. There's nothing. And even if they wanted to go play in the playground at the school at Holcomb, you can't get to it. So, I own a house up in the Barlow Crest neighborhood. I also own a rental property. And I just got a call today for someone that's interested in renting the house, and I was explaining to them the whole the whole neighborhood and everything. I said, "Oh, but by the way, there's no parks there you can't walk the kids to, and you have to drive your kids to someplace else." So, look, guys, I think we can do better than this. If you just imagine putting this many homes with all these families and no parks or anything. So, just to add on to what has already been said about the traffic, I think that goes without said. And any more saying about that, so, anyway, thank you.
Ask a quick question. Have you attended any of the Park Place Neighborhood Association meetings?
Yeah.
Oh, good. I was wondering if everybody here from Barlow Crest attends.
Yeah, yeah. When I can. I work late hours and I get here when I can.
They've been having some discussions about all this. Just wanted, thanks.
Thanks.
Just so you know, that Park Place was not named by the City of Oregon City. We annexed that in because of the health hazard. There was a septic, system-wide septic tank failure in the neighborhood, and the city annexed it on the request of the State of Oregon because it was a health hazard. So, we didn't name it. So, even though it's kind of a misnomer, as you're pointing out. Come on up, sir.
When was that done?
You can fill it out after. That's fine. I worked on the annexation, so it was sometime between, I think it was in the 90s. Hi, thank you.
Gary Shaner, and yes, I live in Barlow Crest. In fact, I was the first one there. To kind of put an explanation of why everybody has this traffic problem, as you all know, several years ago, they completely rebuilt that intersection of 213 and Redland, the underpass, everything. We all received flyers and information that it was going to be a much more user-friendly intersection. It's quite the opposite. I travel the road daily, and I've been paying particular attention. My wife says I'm obsessed about it. Between the hours approximately 3:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon, those two left lanes, turning left onto northbound 213, allow a maximum of six cars per lane, guaranteed, anytime during that several hour. These people will attest to that. At the same time, the on-ramp from, or the signal right down the street from Clackamas River Drive will allow 20 to 30 cars to go the same road, same direction. You go back on up to 213 at Beaver Creek, two left-turn lanes going onto the same highway, during the same hours, it'll allow 50 cars. So, I took it one step further. I called the State Highway Department. I explained everything I just told to you, and I said, "There's talk of putting another several hundred homes up there." So, he promised he'd take a look. He did. He made a visit. This is one of the engineers. He visited the intersection during those timeframe, and he called me back, and he said, "The light's working exactly the way we want it to." That light's controlled by the state. We have no guarantee that if you dump a lot more cars in there, the state will modify that signal. According to him, their concern is nothing more than the flow of 213 and 205, state highways, and they have jurisdiction on that signal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to testify? Come on up, Mike.
And again, Mike's all going. And again, this is maybe more procedural stuff, but yeah, these guys have been working on this application for I don't know how long, you know, months and maybe more than that, you know, on their own. And now, we're only going to be given less than a week, basically, to review the report before February 27th meeting. I would really, I guess, urge or suggest that this whole process be, you know, extended a little bit longer to give people a chance to comment or to review the reports and comment appropriately on, you know, the seven conditions that you guys have to look at for annexation proposals and that sort of thing. Because right now, I mean, I really couldn't give you anything more than anecdotal evidence or anecdotal comments as far as any of those seven, seven conditions. And I think if we had a report to go by, that that might help a little bit, and if we had a little bit more time, because, you know, I think like somebody else earlier said, that, you know, I mean, we don't live this stuff 24/7. And, you know, you have to pay people looking for development, and you have the staff, the city staff and the state staff looking at all the reports and stuff. And, you know, give us a little time to at least look at something, you know, a little more in-depth. I mean, I don't know if that'll make any difference to anybody else's comments as far as what they would, what they would think, but it might help out a little bit. That's basically all for now.
We get the exact same amount of time that you do.
Well, this, you know, this affects us, because we're living there. And by the way, just anecdotally, I mean, I've, I've lived there for 38 years now. So, I mean, I've seen all the changes that occurred with Barlow Crest and the one development south of, south of Holcomb, so I can, you know, I can see the changes.
I think I recall Susan coming in when we were reviewing Barlow Crest.
She probably did, yeah.
I think, I think she did.
I don't recall, but, you know, my memory's going. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Applicant response?
Did you want to say anything, Mr. Robinson?
No, I appreciate what I heard tonight.
Okay, all right.
Do you need a motion to close, or does she just close? Okay. I move we close the public comment section of this hearing and continue the hearing until February 17th.
February 27th.
Yeah, 27th. I saw 2017. February 27th, 2017, leaving the record open.
I second it.
Just to clarify real quick, so the next hearing will be here at 7:00 PM on the 27th. There'll be a staff report again. You can find it on orcity.org. If you look under the agenda, that'll have findings as well as the application. As identified in the notice that was sent out to all the, all the neighbors and the sign posted on the property, there's the list of the applicable approval criteria if you want to take a look at that or if you want to see the application itself that's responding to those criteria. Those are all on our website as well.
And if they wanted to come in and review the file, they could do that as well?
Yes, the planning division is located at 221 Malala Avenue, and we are open from 8:30 to 3:30 Monday through Friday, except for next Monday.
For you old timers, that's the old Copeland Lumber Building.
It is.
Is there a second to that motion?
I did. I seconded it three times.
Okay, well, you didn't speak up. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and so just so we can be clear to the public, we are closing the public hearing for this evening, but we will be having a second hearing where we will also be taking testimony. And then I'll get to read the exciting quasi-judicial land use hearing script, which I'm sure you're all waiting to hear that. And we can accept written testimony between now and then? So, it's been moved and seconded. Do you call a roll?
And I apologize if I pronounced your last name wrong. Commissioner Guile?
You got it right.
Perfect.
Yes.
Commissioner Mabey?
Maybe.
Maybe, okay.
Yes.
Maybe.
Maybe, yes. Maybe. Yes, maybe.
Commissioner Henkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
And Chair McGrith?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. If you want to stay, we have another thrilling hearing coming. Do you want to ask staff?
Bob, do you have a meeting in Park Place before that meeting?
You could come on up and ask the staff your question while we get ready for the next.
Let's, let's not hurry.
Yeah. We'll take a five-minute break. Then you can ask a question.
See, Mike Robinson has so much that he's gonna stay here and listen, have us listen to this variance.
It's not for the money, it's for the love.
I knew that. That's what I, that's what I said.
Is it, is it for $1 in love and affection?
Or other such valuable considerations.
I remember that in the property class. $1 in love and affection. So we used to go around handing out fake $1 bills and, no, affection.
Affection.
All the mics are on.
Like this.
All the mics are on?
Affection. No, mine wasn't on.
Let's go.
I just turned it back on.
Let's do this.
All right. The door will be closing shortly and then we will not hear the noise outside.
That is the slowest door.
I know.
So safe.
Well, that's because sometimes there are slow people and they need, they need help getting there. All righty then. All right. I'm gonna call the meeting back into session and we have item 3B, proposed sign variance for an existing sign at 19352 Malala Avenue in Oregon City in the General Commercial C zoning district, planning file VR 16-03. And I will say it's been a long time since we've had any variances. All right. So we are now getting to read the, even though you probably know it by heart, quasi-judicial land use hearing script.
Do it with some emotion.
Yes. Do it with emotion? Okay.
Let's see how you're doing there.
Specificity?
Yeah.
Okay. We, I've already read the hearing number. VR 1603, public hearing on this land use application is scheduled tonight. A staff report has been prepared for each applica, for this application and has been made available to the public seven days prior to the public hearing, first public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that applies to the applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed that criteria, which is contained in the staff report, and for the public, please help us by addressing, addressing your testimony to that criteria. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set forth in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. And then it says, point to the item on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in order in which their slip has been received or however I decide to shuffle them and should be filled out with your address on the card so that the city can notify you of its final decision. For the public record, begin, please begin all testimony by stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed towards the applicable approval criteria. If you believe criteria, other criteria applies in addition to those addressed in the staff report, please identify and discuss that criteria and explain how and why you believe it applies to the application under consideration. A person may submit any written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written material received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to be a part of that record. If a person intends for a PowerPoint presentation, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures or other fabulous exhibits to be used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they are not given to the staff, they will not be included as part of the record. Any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the planning commission should make a decision which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised for consideration of the city commission or Luba or both. So without raising that issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to, the issue will not be deemed applicable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with that same sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated response to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. We will now open the record for Oregon City File Number VR 1603, a request for a variance for a sign. Does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias or any other statement to declare? Gentlemen?
No, I'm done.
My wife works up at Holcomb Elementary.
Has, has to do with the variance?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? Like, scratch that.
Okay, scratch that.
You mean she doesn't work there?
Yes. Okay.
I was just thinking about the annexation.
I've enjoyed Little Cooperstown and Lake Croissant on occasion.
Okay. And so that means you, you may also say you've visited the site?
Uh-huh.
Mr. Guile?
Drive by the site almost daily.
Uh, I've visited the site.
Do you have any ex parte contacts or other?
No.
Okay.
I hardly ever stop there.
Okay.
I drive by the site regularly and have frequented several of the businesses there, but no ex parte contact with the actual owner and/or their representative.
That's what I wanted to say.
Just say ditto.
Ditto.
What he said.
Right.
Exactly.
Right. No other bias to declare.
Okay. And I have visited the site, but I do not have any ex parte con, contacts, conflicts of interest or any other statement to declare for the record.
Does anybody in the audience wish to challenge one of the commissioners?
Is there anybody in the audience here that is here for this item? That wants to challenge our statements or con?
They don't even have to be here for the item to challenge.
Well, they do have to be here to challenge it, otherwise how will they hear it?
But they don't have to be here for this item.
Okay. All right. So Trevor, would you like to give us your staff report, please?
Yes.
Has everyone switched over to the presentation page? All right.
So, following variance is an application to expand an existing sign beyond the dimensions specified by the general commercial district, adding 30 square feet to an existing 50-square-foot sign for retail development located at 19352 Malala Avenue. And this is the vicinity map. The development in question is near the intersection of Malala Avenue and 213, which is just south of the post office, if you're familiar with, with that, and just north of the storage units that are along Malala. Um, there's a site plan. As you can see here, there are several buildings, several buildings which contain even more businesses located on this site. The area that is in red is approximately where the sign is currently located. So it's, it's at the entrance of Malala. The original sign was permitted back in 2008 as for 50 square feet. This is the sign permit as it was originally, or the illustration of the sign as it was originally permitted back in 2008. And here is the sign today. And if, I'll, I'll switch back and forth here. As, as you can see, they added some additional square footage below the existing sign, 30 square feet to be exact.
So what you are saying for the record is that the sign has already been altered?
Correct. The sign is there, the sign.
Is this sign in code compliance?
The sign, I believe, is in code compliance right now, yes. Um, and the picture you see right now is the sign as it looks pretty much today.
That's what I saw when I drove by it, so.
Yes.
But the additional, the way it is now is within code compliance with the Saturday?
It is, it's in code, it's a code compliance violation.
It's a code violation.
Yeah. That's what I should say. It's a code compliance violation as of right now.
Well, actually, it's not a compliance violation, it's a code violation.
Code, code violation. Yes.
I'm sorry. Could you all, would you want to begin a little bit? I can't hear you, we're in the background.
Laura, could you? Yeah, thank you, Laura. So let's just hold on just a quick second here. I think sometimes people don't realize that the glass is not soundproof and you can't hear. I always go around the corner.
Yeah.
I go over there when I'm talking to people. Because, yeah, it's, it's kind of like you're hearing.
No, it's more like roar, 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 roar.
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah.
We don't want to shoo them out, but they could have just gone around the corner. Okay.
Yes. Okay. Continue. Yes, there is currently a code violation on this sign as of right now. There were no permits originally taken out to, or no variances originally done to permit the size, or sign to be at this 80-square-foot size, size that is currently being requested.
How long has it been at this size that nothing was done before now?
It's not relevant.
I would, yeah, I would direct us to stay towards the approval criteria.
Well, it just seems to me we're asking permission after the fact, so any of us could build a sign and then later come to you and say, "Oh, can I have permission?"
Again, just if you want to stay narrow, you focus towards the approval criteria.
Let's save that for discussion.
All right.
So currently, the, the street views here, you can see them on your monitors, but I'll point to it on the screen here with this pointer. But the top is Malala southbound and you can kind of see the sign right here. It's not out in traffic. And the bottom is Malala northbound and as you can see, it's, it blends in with the current sign that it is, that is existing and again, not in traffic. So this is what it again, looks like.
And it is outside the public right of way, correct?
It is outside the public right of way, yes. It is, it is contained on the, um, site.
Yep. Okay.
And currently, um, going near the vicinity of the existing sign, there are some neighboring signs that are visibly 50 square feet or larger and just north of the developments, really, um, couple strip developments and the Wilco sign right now is, is at 50 square feet and closer to the building or to the site in question is the, uh, the corner of...
We know where it is. Biscuits and suddenly we know them.
Garden Meadow Drive and Malala, but their sign looks to be approximately 90 square feet to 100 square feet.
They're all in compliance?
Um, they all have, they are currently in compliance, yes. They have, um, different amount of frontages.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, which brings them into compliance, yes. And here are the variance criteria that we're looking at for a sign variance. I, I will let you read them unless you would like me to read them to you. And these are the criteria that the applicant was tasked to respond to and that the staff reviewed before, um, before bringing this recommendation to the planning commission. And all in all, the, um, city staff found that the request for the variance is reasonable and we are recommending approval for the subject sign variance.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
I'm afraid to ask you anything tonight, so I'm out of this.
No, it's okay.
It seems I've been saying the wrong thing all night.
Why don't you go ahead and try it and we'll see.
No, I'm not gonna ask anything anymore. Twice tonight, I've been told that I'm asking the wrong thing and out of space.
You asked it at the wrong time, not at the wrong thing.
I just try to understand things and for the general public on TV. I'm done for tonight.
Gentlemen?
I'll, I'll wait.
You'll wait? Okay. I have a couple of questions for staff. I, I just, for the record, I want you to know, I did talk to staff this afternoon because I had some questions. Just as, on your pictures that you showed, why are the other signs that you presented in here relevant to this request?
It is to show that there are signs within the neighborhood that are, that do exceed 50 square feet and that, um, it is, it's a reasonable request to make because there are neighboring sites that have signs that are over 50 square feet, that this, this one site requesting a, a variance to exceed that would not be out of context for the, for that, um, segment of development along Malala.
Okay. But again, as Mr. Mah, Commissioner Mahoney asked, those signs are in compliance and so I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not understanding why it's relevant. So that's why I'm asking you the question. Because if they're in compliance and this is not in compliance, what difference does it make? These sites obviously have larger frontages, they meet the city's sign code and, you know, I think.
I find it relevant as other signage is in the area.
Well, the other signage in the area is, is compliant.
Sure.
And this, and this is not.
And again, one of the arguments that the...
It's not just because everybody else gets to do it, I get to do it. So.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I'd like to point out that one of the other, another one of the arguments that the applicant has made is that the, due to the amount of businesses in this site and the, the threshold to go up to that 100 square foot is, um, they need 200 square, they need 200 feet of frontage. And right now, they have approximately 175 feet of frontage.
And again, as I asked you, how, how is that the city's problem?
And so I think that, um, to reiterate what Trevor is saying, it's not anybody's problem, but had they asked for this before, they built it or not, the general idea is that there are many similar size commercial developments even along the same street and you would expect to see sizes of different sizes and it's not all that different, but given the configuration with that narrow frontage.
So I don't want to, I don't want to editorialize, but the, the code variances that I've done in, you know, my travels is usually you have a maxim that says that the applicant is being denied a right that's commonly enjoyed by others in a similar situation. So you have a similar lot size, similar configuration, they're getting, you know, X amount of signage and then this guy doesn't get that amount. And so you make that argument that you should be able to get the same thing under the same kind of general parameters. And I know the code doesn't really say that.
No, it doesn't anymore.
So it's, it's unfortunate that, but it always goes there, you know, in the discussion because you're looking at signs that are similar in other places and comparing it to this one that they're, that they're asking, um, you know, actually less square footage for than, than what's actually there. So, um, you can maybe reach it from a compatibility standpoint and say, "Well, this sign is a little smaller than the other signs that are in the neighborhood." So, you know, you can say that they're meeting the mitigation standard and you can say...
So do you want to hold that thought?
Sure.
And let's, let's have Mr. Robinson come up and he can talk to us about what's going on.
Trying to work it through.
Yeah. No, I, I tried to, I tried to go there too.
Right.
Because I, I remember what it used to say.
So.
I was, I was having a hard time.
Good enough.
Anyway, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Robinson, sir?
Good evening, Chair McGriff, members of the commission. My name is Michael Robinson. I'm a land use attorney. I'm here on behalf of the applicant tonight and I wanted to tell you, uh, the applicant and his representative, Mr. Givens, apologized for their inability to be here tonight. They have previous commitments and so since they knew I would be here for the annexation matter and enjoying it so much, they thought I might want to stay for this as well. So I said I would.
And we appreciate that.
So, thank you. I want to begin by saying that we agree with the staff report and findings. Of course, we think the staff did a good job of analyzing the application and applying the facts provided in the application of the approval criteria. We certainly appreciate the recommendation for approval. Chair McGriff, if I could, I'll go to the criteria in just a moment, but I think it Chairman McGriff, if I could, I'll go to the criteria in just a moment, but I think it might be helpful if I took a shot at answering two of the questions asked tonight. I think your question was a good one, why are the photos of the other signs relevant? And perhaps Commissioner Espy already stole my thunder a bit, but I think you got the right answer. If you look at fifteen twenty-eight oh one oh A, that's the standard that requires that a variance, let me find it. It's on, uh, I'm sorry. That's the standard that requires, that a variance equal or exceed the purpose of the regulation to be modified. And so if the commission looks, and this is on page seven of the staff report...
Trevor, do you want to put the criteria back up on that slide? There you go.
So that is, I believe, the third bullet point. So if you look at page seven of the criteria, Chairman McGriff, the staff report lists the purposes of the sign code in fifteen twenty-eight oh one oh, and there are, there are A through G. And the first one is, A, quote, allows signs compatible with the character and uses allowed in the zoning district in which they are located. So one answer to your question, Chairman McGriff, is that showing other signs in the area shows how this sign is compatible. Doesn't justify it because they have big signs, although you could certainly make that case. But it's simply, I think, to, to show you that it's, it's compatible with the zone, with the same zoning district in the area. I also think another way to answer that question is it helps you understand the basic problem this applicant faces. This is an, as the staff report explains, this is an L-shaped lot. There are four buildings on it. There's only a hundred and seventy-six feet on Malala Avenue. Three of the buildings are behind, I think Little Cooperstown is in front, is that right? So three of the buildings, including several new businesses, as the application explains, are behind that. It's difficult to have good visibility. So you can see if you've got a lot of frontage on Malala Avenue, you're entitled, for example, if you have two hundred feet, you're entitled, I think, to, uh, is it?
Hundred and five.
A hundred, yeah. It's almost, I think it's double, isn't it? We get fifty because we have less than two hundred, uh, two hundred feet of frontage. We have fifty on each face, and I, I've got that in my presentation. Uh, but you get more. So I think the point of, of showing those signs is that you have all that frontage on Malala, you get a larger sign. You're able to put all your businesses up there. This side, because it has a narrow frontage, but, but the bulk of the property, it's over two acres, is behind it, gets less signage. Now, you can't, that's the way the code's written, but I think that helps the commission understand, at least in the applicant's view, why this variance is justified. So I can think of two reasons why those photos were relevant. And Commissioner Espy, you asked about what I think is fairly typical language, a right being denied that others possess. But I think, as Chairman McGriff pointed out, apparently your code has been changed because that standard is not in there.
Right.
So, not criticizing you, I just note that that's, I mean, we don't have...
It always goes there.
Yes.
It used to say that.
So it sounds like you had traditional variance language at one point that would have applied to sign variances, but no longer.
And in fact, that fits your argument to have...
Right.
Well, I'm glad something fits my argument tonight.
But it's not there.
You know, the configuration of the lot is, is a good argument for that.
So, and I think that's relevant. So I, I wanted to try and answer your questions. I think they were good questions directed to the evidence that you saw. So let me do this if I can, Commissioner, commissioners, and I'll finish up. As I said, we agree with the staff reports, findings, we think it does a good job, and we appreciate the recommendation for approval. Secondly, we think you can find, as your staff did, that we, the application meets the approval criteria, is supported by substantial evidence in the whole record, and that's our test. And third, I wanted to just mention three things. You can find these in both the application narrative and the staff report, but I think they're important enough that if you don't mind, I'll just take a few minutes and repeat them. One, I've already shared with you. This is an L-shaped lot. It's two point five acres. Three of the four buildings are behind Little Cooperstown. The reason that we're asking for this sign variance, and agreed, it's after the fact, and, and I think the applicant, if he were here tonight, would apologize to you for that. But the reason we're doing that is to provide visibility for the businesses that aren't visible, just if one is driving by the street. Uh, if you take a look at the site plan slides, site plan in the, in the staff report and what was shown to you tonight, I think that illustrates it well. Thanks, Trevor. That illustrates it well. So if you, if you had a typical commercial lot with a lot of frontage on Malala Avenue, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Uh, you could see the building, plus you get more signage. But here, you not only get less signage because of the frontage on Malala Avenue, you can't really see the businesses and buildings behind it. Secondly, and I think the staff report makes a good point about this at page five, if this site were just twenty-four feet wider on Malala, we'd be allowed a hundred and fifty square feet of sign face, not just fifty. So just, yeah, it's the way the code's written, but we point that out because it, it, I don't think the code's really written to reflect a site like this where there's a lot of development behind. And the last point is, to the extent this, this goes to the criteria about impacts, the sign, the additional sign face is on the base. It's not on the top. So for example, the manufactured home community, which is across the street, if you notice the, the photos, there's a six-foot-high fence because we're putting the, the sign, the additional sign face on the bottom. It's not as though, those folks have to look at additional signage. And I think that, too, is relevant to the approval criteria. So I hope that's helpful to you. I know the applicant would appreciate your supporting the staff and approving this tonight. And I would ask you, if you have questions that I haven't been able to answer, if you'd give me the opportunity to do so before the record is closed, I'd appreciate it. Other than that, Chairman McGriff, I have nothing else, and we'd ask that you follow the staff recommendation and approve this tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for, yes, sir, Mr. Mahoney, sir?
So you're saying the, the hardship upon which the variance is, is dependent or, or related to, is the shape of the lot?
Well, there's, Commissioner Mahoney, that's, that's a good question. The answer is yes. But if I may, let me just say there is no, quote, hardship standard in the code, but, but you, you've caught the essence of our argument, of our argument. It's the shape of the lot and the, the amount of frontage we have on Malala Avenue.
Can I take at the outside dimensions that the sign are not going to be changed?
No, sir.
It's just added furbage on the, uh...
It's, it's the plates on the base of the sign, and then we'll put lettering on there to advertise the businesses. That's correct.
Now, I'm going to ask you a tough question. When in the heck did you take upon yourself to do this in advance and make it an application?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can tell you, as I said earlier, I'm sure if the client were here, he would have apologized to you. I've been doing this a long time, and it happens. Sometimes the sign contractor doesn't understand the code. Sometimes something goes wrong. I've had that. I've been doing this for almost twenty-five years, and it happens occasionally. So again, my apologies for that. I think that's a fair question to ask.
There's no indication of intent?
None that I can see in the application.
Until it gets irritating.
And, and I, well, I, I would say this. I think it would be an extraordinarily risky move to intentionally do something like this because you don't have a guarantee, the commission is going to find that the variance approval criteria met. And if you found that there was intent, I think that would make you a fairly unpopular applicant.
Tom?
I'm silent.
I'm, I'm give, I want to give you every opportunity to ask your question.
I'm not going to say anything more tonight.
Okay. Do you want to write it down? I could ask the question.
I'm done.
Damon?
Okay. First, you, Laura, you kind of shot Tom down when he asked, when did this change occur? And frankly, to me, it's relevant. We just put out a new sign code. Did this, was the sign altered after the sign code or before the sign code was adopted? That has relevance to, to me.
It's just not relevant to the approval criteria, is, is what I'm saying.
Right.
So, you know, our decision, had they asked...
I, I, I think it's relevant because it falls underneath the hardship. If they made the thing and then we changed the rules, then they have a hardship that we've, that we've imposed upon them. If they made it after the decision was made, then it's a hardship that they created for themselves. So to me, it's part of the hardship criteria that I'm evaluating.
There's hardship criteria.
No, well, I, I apologize.
The request is the minimum variance that would alleviate the hardship. It's right there.
So that's what I'm using.
My apologies.
All right.
So that's my first question is, when, when in relation to the, the recent adoption of the code?
Can you, may I answer?
That's why I'm asking, Laura, when the, when was the code adopted?
Uh, the code was effective in November twenty fifteen.
Okay.
I don't know when the change to the sign was made, unless Trevor knows.
Because I thought it was sixteen.
The Google Street View, I believe, was from twenty fifteen, and the sign was, I, I, maybe it was twenty sixteen.
We're unclear.
I'm unclear.
Do you have an answer to that?
Uh, Commissioner, maybe. I do not.
Okay.
If it's not in the record, then I don't know.
All right, that's fine. And, and I'm, I'm going to end up putting you on the, the stick some more, but...
Go right ahead.
The, um, you've been bouncing around between fifty and a hundred and fifty square. It's fifty feet per face, so you have a hundred square foot sign.
Correct.
The, if you had the other twenty-four feet, you could go to a hundred and fifty, which would be seventy-five foot aside.
That's, that's correct. Thank you.
And so, uh, even with that extra twenty-four feet, you would still need a variance because your sign's ten feet too big.
Actually, it says, where the street frontage is two hundred feet, I think I'm actually right. Where the street frontage is two hundred feet or greater in length, the display area shall not exceed three hundred square feet. And I think I said a hundred and fifty per sign face. So that's correct under your code. If, if we had another twenty-four feet, we would, we would not need a variance.
Yeah, you guys are just asking for a hundred and sixty total.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's fifteen twenty-eight oh eight oh C three...
Okay, so...
C.
So the under two hundred, I was trying to find the actual...
The under two hundred is, is as you stated it.
Is a hundred.
It's a fifty feet each face times two.
For a hundred total.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's why I'm just, I want to make sure that we're talking about total sign or face.
So...
So we don't...
May, may I do this? This might help. So because we're under two hundred, fifteen twenty-eight oh eight oh C three... Hang on, hold on a minute. No, because we're under two hundred feet.
Under two hundred.
C three B, where the street frontage is fifty feet or greater but less than two hundred feet in length. Display area shall not exceed one hundred square feet, and the sign face shall not exceed fifty.
Right, so fifty and fifty, you're...
So that's, that's what the applicant said earlier. Fifty feet each face, hundred total. We're asking for eighty feet each face, a hundred and sixty square foot total.
Okay.
But if we were over two hundred feet, we'd have...
Three hundred.
Three hundred, because each face is entitled to one fifty, and that's what I said earlier. So I got that part right. I booted the hardship, but I got part of it right, so I'm at a five hundred.
So, okay, um, and then, uh, when the sign was extended, the address disappeared. So do you know where the addresses moved to? I mean, to me, I do biz, I go to businesses based on their address, and so...
Can we, can we see a two thousand eight permit?
See the, yeah. Yeah, there's no numbers on it, and that's, I know the city requires...
I directed to our assistant city attorney.
I'm not sure that the content of the sign is germane to this discussion. We have a sign face proposal that can say anything it wants to say. Is your point that the numbers are going to go underneath this, and that's going to make the sign bigger?
No, the num, that, the numbers have disappeared, and so if the hardship is we can't advertise our businesses, and at the same time, they've removed the way for people to locate their businesses except for the sign, again, they've replaced one solution with another.
They may, they may put the numbers in the spaces that, of the added area that they're proposing somehow.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think the not, if you add the numbers...
My point is that the content of what goes in this space and how, what they put in this whole original area and added area is completely up to them and not germane to this review.
Could you go back to the original sign? So I guess there is a question. Do the numbers count as part of the sign?
I don't think so.
No, they don't count as part of the support structure for the sign.
Yeah.
They're required by code, aren't they, the numbers?
The fire department, yes, and the city require that each property have an address, because that's how you find, that's how you find stuff. That's how they find stuff.
Doesn't necessarily have to be associated with the sign. It could be on the side of the building.
Okay, hold on. I think he has a response.
Well, Chairman McGriff, my ask, I guess I have a response slash question. So I agree with what the assistant city attorney has said. You can't look at content. That's a constitutional matter in Oregon. But I also agree, and I think Commissioner Mahoney, you said this, we have a fire code requirement to identify the property address. I think it is on the first building. I'm not sure about that. But I would also go and ask if I could, Mr. Martin, did you get an adverse comment from the fire department when this was circulated?
No public comments.
So I can, I will say, whatever the requirement that the fire department might impose for, for numbering, we will make sure we satisfy it, and we will do so in a way that doesn't require another sign variance.
Okay.
That's a specific code requirement pertaining to content, because your address is content.
Well, that, that's like identifying your property law by tax code.
Information content, when...
No, they're different.
We could put, if I could, Chairman McGriff, we, the, someone can put anything they want in that sign area, and there's, there's simply no ability under the Oregon Constitution to rec, to regulate the content. My guess is, well, I'll just tell you what the application says. The application says they want the additional thirty square feet of sign face on each side to advertise the businesses. So if there's an additional requirement, and I know you're correct about that from the fire department for addressing, we're going to satisfy that requirement in another way.
Yeah, I don't think it pertains, I, I appreciate the fact that he made the comment. I understand why you're objecting, but I think it, his question was a point of information. It's not going to be used for the basis of his decision. He's saying, gee, there used to be addresses, that's why we went back to the original one. Yeah, there was an address, so.
Well, actually, there was proposed to be an address. We actually haven't seen the, the, the pre-adjusted sign. Maybe, they may never put it up there. Well, I'm, I guess I'm going to make a content argument here, and it's going to, the attorney's going to throw something at me. The example...
Still wearing both my shoes.
The, the exemplars that were given of the three signs, so if you could go back to the pictures of the, there. The reason made because you can't advertise all the businesses that you have in, in your, in your, uh, in your business area because your frontage isn't big enough. The exemplars that were given are signs that are in compliance, and I would point out, the one in front of Biscuits can't advertise all the businesses they have because there's no Pizza Hut sign there, and that's a major business. So if they're in compliance and can't get it done, but they do business anyway, why can't you be in compliance and shortchange some of your businesses, too?
Well, let me...
So be, before you answer that, that gets to a question I have. Because one of the questions I had for staff was, what other options were proposed that would accomplish the same purpose without having the sign altered? And that would be something that would be important for me to know, because working with many, many, many sign companies over my career, they always can come up with a way. So I didn't see anything in the, in the submittal that said, gee, we tried to do X, Y, or Z, and we couldn't do it. It was, well, something happened to the sign, it got altered, and so now we want to make it okay. So that was, you know, the minimum requested, so that would be my question. Where were, where were examples, are there examples, or were there examples considered saying, here, we have fifty square feet on each side? We could get all the businesses' names on there, or whatever we wanted to say on there, using the same square footage.
But it'd be so tiny that blah, 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 or whatever.
Well, but yes, or whatever, but yeah, so I don't, I don't see any other than...
I guess you could argue that they made, that they did the minimum sign size to fit all of the business...
They had at the time.
Names that they have at the time. And so that is what they, that's the option that they presented.
Do you want to let the applicant respond?
Yes. So that was a follow-up, that was further clarification of your question, because that was my question.
So Chairman McGriff, if you don't mind, I'll start with Commissioner Maybe, and then I'll come back to your question. And if you'll help me remember your question, Chairman McGriff.
Oh, I think you'll get there.
Because at my advanced age, I tend to forget. So, um, and without, without being, without sounding like a know-it-all, when you ask about biscuits, you put a fact into the record that's not apparent from the record. I don't know that there, I can't see there's a Pizza Hut behind biscuits. But, so let me, let me venture, let me try and answer your question this way. First of all, if you look at page one of the application narrative, it, it explains why they asked for it. Quote, "The requested variance is needed in order to provide sufficient area for all tenants of the development to have signage for the business." And if you look at the staff report on page, I think this is repeated, and I may not be able, I'm, I'm going to refer to the application page. The application page, page four, explains which businesses in those rear buildings need the signage. So that's the applica, that's the applicant's justification. We need the additional signage space so that we can advertise our buildings. Secondly, the difference between this site, Commissioner Maybe, and the biscuits is I'm guessing that the configuration, that you know the site. It's not, we don't have the configuration of the lot in record. My guess is it's something whereby you may be able to see Pizza Hut from the street as opposed to the configuration of this L-shaped lot where you can't see the businesses. So that's material difference between the two. And that may be why, for example, on, again, using your example if I could, why the Biscuits development doesn't have all the tenants advertised, because they don't need to, because you get visibility from Malala. Whereas on this site, you don't have that same visibility. So that's...
I'll buy that, that's fine.
Then I'm going to stop. Commissioner McGriff, your question is a good one. There's nothing in the record that I'm aware of that shows what, what else, if they consider anything else. But I would take you back to the criteria and...
Could you flip to the sign again, the...
Criteria?
No, the, yeah, this. So my question, basically, you've got the, the businesses, whatever they say. Seems to me they could have been reconfigured to make available signage for the other businesses that are coming there. And that's why I'm saying, what was done to show that that couldn't be done? Which is basically, it's saying, well, we just need the extra room to advertise businesses. To me, that wasn't as, that isn't compelling because it's, it's not telling me that there were other efforts made to, well, gee, we've got this size. Could we reconfigure this to make, so everyone, for everyone?
Yeah, I, and I...
I don't know.
And I'm going to speculate, so if you don't mind, I'll do that.
Sure, and I'm speculating. I'm, I'm doing what you're doing. I'm speculating.
So I'll give you two answers. The, the standard we're talking about is fifteen twenty-eight one three oh A two, that the request is the minimum variance that would alleviate the hardship. The, the evidence in the application is this is the minimum that we need to advertise our businesses in the rear. And I'm just looking at this, and I've gotten to the point where I use reading glasses now. I'm looking at this. My, my personal opinion, and I'm not a sign expert, I don't pretend to be one, my personal opinion is if you... my personal opinion is, if you look at this, there is not a way in the existing fifty square feet of sign face to make those signs smaller in a way that would satisfy the businesses and let people read them as they're driving down Malala Avenue. Frankly, and I'll just, this is anecdotal, but I'll just offer this for your consideration. When I'm driving down a street looking for a business, I want the sign to do two things. I want it to be visible enough that I can see it and safely drive, but I also want the lettering to be big enough that I can see the business I'm looking for. And I suspect, Chairman McGriff, the answer to your question is, they didn't think they could make the panels any smaller, still give justice to the names of the businesses, and that's why they believe that the minimum necessary to satisfy the variance or to satisfy the hardship is to ask for the additional thirty feet of sign frontage.
You don't, do you have context?
No.
'Cause I can, I can read it, but I have really good glasses.
Well, keep in mind, you're standing, I mean, that's not how it would be portrayed to you if you were driving down the street.
Yeah, well, I agree with, I mean, I'm like Damon, I'm not necessarily looking for the business, I look for the address. That's how I find stuff.
And I think we will have an address as well.
So my other, my final question is, it had a question to do with, was the applicant, or is the applicant the developer of this particular business cluster?
I think that is, the applicant, Trevor, I don't have the form.
So the owner is Mark, Mr. Handris, and the applicant is Mr. Givens, so.
So, Mr. Givens-
Excuse me, not the applicant, but is Icon and Mark Handris, did they develop this?
I don't know if they developed it or if he bought it af- I'm not trying to be picky.
No, 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 it was just, it was just a question I had.
So the owner of, the owner of the development is Mr. Handris, and the application was made on behalf of Mr. Handris. Whether, I don't know if he developed the commercial property, or if it was developed and then he bought it. But frankly, you all might have a better idea of that than I do.
Yeah, see, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know.
And I will tell you the reason that I asked that, because, you know, having worked with Icon Development and having them come here many, 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 many times, I know that they're experienced developers. It's not the easiest lot to develop, 'cause of its configuration and everything else. But, you know, we don't have anything to do with that, and, you know, anyway. So that was just, it was just a question, just a question I had.
My last question is, if we are being presented that this is the minimum size necessary for the current configuration of businesses, does that mean that we can expect a new sign to show up when the large automotive company in the back chooses to move out and it gets subdivided into three or four other businesses, and now you need more frontage for more signs?
Well, I think I will have these minutes bronzed and presented to my client. But the correct answer is, you can never tell someone they can't ask for something. All we can do is suggest to someone that if an application's been previously granted, you should look hard at the planning commission's discussion and see whether it makes sense to ask for another application of that type. But, so I-
You don't know, that's fine.
We don't know what's gonna happen, but I do believe that the evidence demonstrates this is the minimum variance necessary to satisfy the hardship identified for this application.
Are there any, yes, sir.
In your judgment, how does the public benefit from approval of this variance?
Public benefits, Commissioner Mahoney, because the conference of plan is furthered, and one of the criteria is satisfaction of relevant plan policies. And one of the, if you look at the staff report, I think it did a nice job of identifying the plan policies that call for a number of things, including economic development, and they wanna support businesses in the community. So that's how I think the public has benefited by this variance.
Any mention of public safety in terms of driving and seeing a sign in the evening? Or-
In the evening.
At a pretty fast pace?
You know, you may, I don't believe so, I could, I could look through the application narrative, but I don't recall seeing that when I looked at it earlier today, Commissioner.
Anything else? May I close the public hearing?
Well.
Would you like some rebuttal?
Well, you want- I'm not the only one in the room, am I?
Barbara, you wanna testify on this?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Do you have any, any further questions you'd like to ask me, Chairman McGriff, or members of the commission?
Guys, okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we will continue the scintillating and exciting discussion.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Sorry you had to be here.
I'm fine.
Mr. Guile. Please don't pull the silent treatment.
I pass.
You pass?
Look, I live in an HOA where people, as president, I saw people make changes to their frontage and to their property, and then they'd come, and the reason was, well, it's better, it's easier to ask permission after we've done something than ask for forgiveness and permission. Yeah, so that's all the reason I asked that question for.
Yeah, no, I understood, I understood.
Couple times tonight, I just feel like climbing up.
I understood why you asked.
I had no problem with it originally, but just, I don't like climbing up.
I apologize. Well, you've just heard me about his experience as an HOA, and I'd like to respond to that, please.
I would've said that originally, but.
All right, we'll open for this, that one item.
Thank you, Chairman McGriff.
Mike Robinson, on behalf of the applicant, I appreciate Commissioner Guile, what you had to say. I too live in an HOA, and I understand exactly what you're saying. The only thing that I want the commission to understand is, there's nothing in the record or evidence, nor has there been any testimony offered, that that, that the, that this applicant hasn't had an intent to violate the code and then ask for forgiveness. He clearly recognizes, just read the narrative, he clearly recognizes that he ran afoul of the code. As I said, if he were here, I'm sure he would apologize himself, but I'll offer the apology on behalf of the applicant. And I think to the extent you think about this application tonight, you should judge it on the merits under the approval criteria and not suggest a motivation that's not apparent from the record. So thank you for allowing me to address that.
Any comments about that before I close it again?
No.
Okay, it's closed again. Damon.
Well, I, in general, I don't have a problem with the added area. But, you know, my concern is, you know, the camel under the tent. You let a little bit under, and not even just this property, but, you know, you move it a little bit 'cause they were only twenty-four feet away. Well, this one's, you know, only thirty-eight feet short, and so on, and and the next person may show up with, you know, I need an exception, and I want the three hundred square feet because I need it. And, you know, we spend a lot of time on-
The sign code.
On the sign code and going through the numbers and the sizes, and so I appreciate where they located, you know, they added to the bottom, you know, so there isn't a, you know, additional light issue. I appreciate the fact there are numerous businesses there. But I'm not all that inclined right now to move from the sign code when it was in place at the time they made this change.
Mr. Mahoney, sir.
Well, from a practical, practical point of view, I don't have any problem with supporting this. I'm a little concerned that they sort of jumped the gun. And if it was up to me, I'd, I'd find them. I'd make up for it. I'd jump, jump, jump the gun in reverse. Somebody's gotta pay for their mistakes, and I don't see why it should be the city in that regard. I don't know if it's legal to do that, I just, I'm just throwing it out for consideration. But the thing that concerns me a little bit, is I agree with Damon, that, you know, if we start doing this, you know, we're, we're, I don't know how it's gonna stack up with the public in terms of the precedent we set, or how many more of these applications are we gonna be confronted with? But where I'm torn is, I don't see that there's any outstanding visual problem that's presented to the driving public, as a matter of fact. I think that it's gonna add to the safety of the public looking for signs. I hate to gawk at night and looking for a sign when it's, it should be bigger than it really is. But, oh, I'm not, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it, I'm gonna support it.
Well, this sign code is one of the more generous sign codes around. I work in a jurisdiction, not that we should emulate any other jurisdiction than the one that we're in, but monument signs only, and they're thirty-two square feet, period, on either side. And they're able to get all their stuff in. Usually, they just identify the business, and then everybody else has got their own signs on, in front of the, in the frontage. I think that when we're, we made a mistake a long time ago when we did the lot divisions for the commercial area there. I don't think it makes a lot of sense to have those L-shaped lots where you have businesses that are turned out of the public frontage. So I think that there is kind of a problem with this lot and a couple of others in this area that don't have businesses that are very visible. So, and, you know, okay, they did do the sign beforehand, there was a miscommunication, that's the way I look at it, I don't think that there was any bad intent. So when I look at these sign variances, I look at it as though the sign was not physically there. This is just a sign, it's a drawn sign, and we look at the way, or whether or not the criteria has been met. I'm kind of on the fence about it. I agree with the concept that, you know, if we approve this variance tonight, who's to say that there's gonna be a bunch of other people that are gonna come in and ask for additional variances? That's real possible. But on the other hand, they've got a problem with their lot, and they can't really see the businesses in the back. So they need to add the additional signs, and so I'm gonna lean towards approving the variance.
And we save the best for last.
So at one time, I was in the position to order a sign in Oregon City of the red soils, and when we ordered that sign, a sign installer came in from Beaverton. So it's not a surprise to me that whoever installed or built the sign wasn't aware of Oregon City codes. Otherwise, you'd be really easy to pick on them. And it's hard to educate the entire metro region on Oregon City's sign codes, although you would hope that they would follow and be knowledgeable. I, I don't have a big problem with this, and I'll quickly acknowledge that there's a lot of problems with this lot. But at the end of the day, this variance isn't gonna cause substantial damage to the adjacent properties. I do believe it's the minimum variance that'll alleviate the hardship of the lot. And visibly, it's not awful looking. I think when we were there designing the sign code, we were doing it with businesses in mind, and in many cases, had those businesses at the table. If we want the businesses to succeed in this development, we have to give them a chance to be seen, because right now, it's hard to see who's in there. You, I, I will drive by and make a U-turn, and I'd rather less people made U-turns and went in and left their money in these stores.
Well, I am not on the fence. I agree with Damon in the sense that we did spend an awful lot of time, and I think the frontage requirement is really the only fair and equitable way to do it. There is nothing that says that somebody had to develop this property commercially, there's nothing that says those businesses have to locate in the back. So I, I just, I disagree with the staff report, and I don't think this is the minimum variance that would alleviate the hardship, because what they're talking about as a hardship is a lot that somebody purchased, which is, has nothing to do with anything with our code, and they could've known or should've known that there might be a problem with that. And I, and again, as I said, I think that there could've been some evidence showing, here's the way we tried to use the current square footage, we couldn't do it, this is why we're asking for a variance. I am miffed about the doing it now, but I'm not letting that influence my decision. I don't think that this meets all of the criteria. And I think, as I said before, showing everybody else who's in compliance is sort of to me saying, well, all the other kids have it, so why can't we have it when it's not really the same, the same issue? I, I feel for the businesses that are in there, but as my experience, my professional experience tells me, that's the last thing most people think about when they're locating a business. They don't really think about signage. And it's something, you know, if I had my magic wand, I wish people would think about it first before they decide to locate somewhere. But I can't, in good conscience, I take variances very seriously. There is a reason why we have variances, and that it better be a pretty darn compelling reason for me to recommend or to vote in support of a variance. I, I don't think that they meet all the criteria, and that's just my opinion from reading the staff report. I apologize, I wrote all over it, because I had a lot of questions. So are we ready for a motion or a vote, or whatever you gentlemen would like to do?
I recommend that we approve variance sixteen oh three, adding thirty square feet to an existing fifty square foot sign for a retail development along.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, would you do the roll call, please?
One second here. Commissioner Guile?
I'll preface my vote by saying, Denise, I brought up the idea of permission early on when it was stopped, and it seems every time I say anything tonight, it's wrong. As soon as I brought it up as part of our discussion, then Mr. Robinson had to come up because I was introducing new evidence, which I'd already tried to talk about earlier.
So is that yes or no?
So I'm abstaining, I'm done with this.
Okay.
I'll get called on the carpet by, for the ma- by the mayor, but I'm abstaining.
Commissioner Maybe?
Well, with the knowledge that every variance stands on its own merit and doesn't necessarily create a record, and with, with the comments by the commissioners about the shape of the lot, I, I'm gonna vote for it.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
And Chairman McGriff?
No, and I stated why I'm not supporting it, because I don't think they've met all the criteria. And I don't think that it's the minimum to alleviate the hardship. So, motion carries, on to our plethora of minutes. All right, so has everybody had a chance to read all of the fabulous draft minutes? And let's take them in order, so we have the minutes of June thirteenth. Does everybody remember back that far, June thirteenth?
Goodness, so.
Two thousand sixteen.
Yep, I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Damon, seconded by, did you second it?
I seconded.
Zach, for approval of the minutes of the sixteen, I mean of, excuse me, the thirteenth, sorry, of June two thousand sixteen?
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner Maybe?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
And Chairman McGriff?
Aye. All right, June twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, where we talked about the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. As I recall, that was a very excellent presentation.
I'll motion to approve June twenty-seventh, twenty sixteen minutes.
You mean you move?
I will move to approve. Thank you.
I'll second.
Let me just hang on just a quick second, I'm just checking, I didn't make any notes on that one, okay. Go ahead, sorry.
Commissioner Guile?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Commissioner Maybe?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
And Chairman McGriff?
Aye. All right, our favorite hearing, work session on July the eleventh. That was, we were talking about the regulations for, see, I highlighted all your comments on here, Tom.
Thank you.
So, July eleventh?
Move approval.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Guile?
Definite aye.
Commissioner Maybe?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
And Chairman McGriff?
Aye. All right, July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen. We had another fabulous pro- update on the Riverwalk, and lots and lots and lots of testimony. I was sort of reliving that, going through that myself. And we had an update on the code. So is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Espy, seconded by?
Second.
Zach, all right.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner Maybe?
Abstain.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair McGriff?
Aye. All right, August 8th, that's when we had the real fun.
Every meeting is really fun.
They are. I had a question for you, Laura, for just, it's, it's more of a question. I had highlighted at the bottom of page four at those minutes where I had asked you to clarify what our regulations were for short-term rentals, and I guess I had a memory gap or lapse, because you said that if someone rented out their facility for less than 30 days, it required a conditional use permit, but if they had it for more than 30 days, it did not?
That's correct.
So, what's, what's the difference in the timing, I guess? Because again, this came up, somebody asked me this question a week ago, and I, I was for the life of me could not answer the question until I saw this.
So, the idea is that you could rent out a house, or you could rent a room or something like that, and those have 30-day minimums generally, as opposed to hotels or things like that, that have shorter than 30 days of minimum. So, in our code, we specify boarding houses and, um, and rentals by how, the length of time that they're rented.
So, this is more like a month-to-month, is what-
Yeah. It's at least 30 days. It doesn't have to be within 30-day increments, but it's at least 30 days, generally month-to-month.
But so, so if we had a place like the Marriott, which has, is like an extended stay hotel, those are generally in commercial zones, and I know sometimes people rent them out for months and weeks because they've got employees coming through and they're staying, and, but that's different, because this is, that's commercial and this is residential.
That's correct. And so, for places like that, if you wanted to rent it for a longer period of time, you could. The distinguishing factor is in residential neighborhoods, if, if you were to rent out your rooms like a hotel nightly, that it has a different impact on the neighborhood than renting it month-to-month.
Well, and additionally, if you're there for 30 or more days, you get tenant status, and then all sorts of legal defenses come to your-
Or leases, or I don't know, whatever. Okay. I did tell them to call the planning department. All right. Because I, I couldn't really answer the question. Okay, is there, we had a motion and a second?
No, but I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Tom, moved by Damon. Yeah, whatever your name is. For August 8th?
Commissioner Guile?
And looking at these, like, I thought, sure, I talked a lot longer than that, but I say aye.
Oh, they just shortened it.
I know, they really did a good job of-
Commissioner Maybe?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
And Chair McGriff?
Aye. All right, last but not least, September 26th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the draft, the minutes of September 26th, 2016.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner Maybe?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Abstain.
Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
And Chair McGriff?
Aye. All right, communications.
That was fun.
That was fun? Laura, he said that was fun, so let's have another batch.
No, 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 no. Were you approved to-
We have a rather short update for communications today, because there aren't any. Business as usual.
Do you have, do you have a communication update?
Um, yeah, Commissioner Mahoney, although not as Commissioner Mahoney, and I are both on the ultimate mobility study for the Beaver Creek 213, which-
The ultimate?
Ultimate, I said.
I think, I, I think it's-
Well, and it should be the ultimate.
I think it is the ultimate mobility.
Since that seems to be an intersection of concern for some people for some reason. We've only had one meeting, uh, the one in February was rescheduled to March 2nd, same bat time, same bat channel. And the, it wa- it was a good discussion. Initially, it started out as a review and comment on our eight, or seven options, and then we took over the meeting and started to make actual comments and corrections and suggestions, rather than, yes, we like this, or no, we don't like that.
When you say we took over the meeting, are you referring to yourself, or?
Royally.
The royal, the royal we.
The, uh, and, and I'll say that one of the plans had, um, there be no left turn from, uh, southbound 213 onto Beaver Creek. So, in other words, you wouldn't come up the hill and turn into the Albertsons thing. You'd have to go past, through a First Street extension, down First Street, and then come back out onto Beaver Creek at First Street, and then drive, which was like, yeah, we just told them, just tear that one up and throw it away, don't even-
That's, that's planning. You, you gotta admit that, that's planning.
Yeah. And it's a shame they wasted time and graphics on that one.
Public works.
Yeah. Um, so-
We knew it was those engineers.
So, anyway, um, there, uh, some of the ideas were, were to make it an actual interchange where there would be an overpass and exit lanes. Add around, oh, $25 million at various levels of the option, to doing some rather strange and unique traffic rea- realignment, which would be cheaper, but would require an additional lights being installed, and getting Oregon City and part-south residents to learn a whole new way of driving. And so, of course, I had to throw out, well, why don't we just replace it with a roundabout? And everybody said, nobody understands roundabouts. And I said, nobody understands your lanes either. So, um-
It's on-
And there's a couple of quick fix suggestions that we threw out, one of which Public Works is already doing, which is to extend the, the turn lanes coming from Fred Myers to turn down the hill, so they'll be closer up to First Street. And then one that I suggested is, why don't we have a runout lane from, coming from like the high school to turn down the hill? It's already paved, there's 500 feet easy where they could do a runout lane, and then cars wouldn't come up and stop right there, which builds up all the traffic up the hill. So, anyway, um, uh, so, we're having another meeting on the 2nd of March, a runout lane, you know, where you, you pull out and you have time to build up speed before you merge.
You're talking about by the high school, not at the intersection?
No, 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 at the intersection. It's coming from the high school to the intersection.
I know where you're talking about.
And then you want to turn and go down the hill. Right now, it's, you start to turn and you stop, and you have to wait for your turn at the light. And there's clearly room, because they've got a larger-than-normal-sized emergency lane, so. Um, so, anyway, uh, we'll see what response we get on the 2nd, and what new and interesting ideas the technical side of the team has come up with.
Are they going to talk at all about enhancing, like, bike lanes and sidewalks and all that groovy stuff?
Not, not there, because night, most of it deals with the highway, and so, um, but there, there is a lot of discussion about what would these things do to pedestrians trying to get from, like, Fred Myers to Albertsons, or whatever.
We will probably get there, we're just not there yet to talk about all of them.
But, but, but it is, um, it is still out there. We haven't not talked about it, it just hasn't been the appropriate time yet.
Right, okay.
Out a comment, if you mind, don't mind.
Yeah.
At that meeting, I told them, as far as I was concerned, that we're approaching this thing, uh, from a point of view that's already been exercised, and, uh, nothing's come of it, because we're not really going to the, the heart of the matter. The heart of the matter is money.
That's where you get to write your big check, remember the check?
That's where I get to write the big check.
Big check.
Now, my point is, if we had the money to make that thing, to improve it the way it should be improved, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about it. We'd be out there digging. We'd be making the improvement. If that's the case, and I think it is, then why aren't we going after our congressional delegation, our state representatives, and anybody that has anything to do with First Street and say, listen, guys, quit horsing around. We've been horsing around for the last 25 years on this thing, studying it to death. Now, we know that money's going to solve that problem. Let's go after the money. We've got the design. Let's go after the money, and put the pressure on where it has to be. The people that are in office that have the authority to, uh, to grant those funds. Now, it would be a first if that happened. Wouldn't it be neat if all of a sudden the city of Oregon City was told, we've got $50 million here, we're going to give you, now you go out there and you improve that intersection. You go do it. Our problem would be solved. So, why aren't we going after the money instead of the design?
Well, I think you're, you're correct, because we have been trying to put a Band-Aid on this thing-
Exactly.
-since the thing opened, and it's, to me, my understanding is that we're just trying to put yet another Band-Aid on top of those other Band-Aids.
Exactly.
And we can't do that. I mean, we keep hearing over and over again about how, the fact that this thing is a level of service F, and so, it's not going to get any F-ier.
That's right.
It's just going to keep getting worse.
So, why aren't we demanding from our elected officials that they pay attention to this problem and give us some money to go out there and fix it?
Well, we need, it's, it needs to be a partnership. We've got other jurisdictions besides ourselves-
Yeah.
-that are involved in this, and it's not, as we all know, this is not an Oregon City problem.
But I think pressure really should be exerted on Metro and, and other regional agencies.
Blackmanus County, and the state.
Laura, is Oregon City a member of the Oregon Transportation Forum?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we are.
And we do have Metro, we are representing some of the county and the state and Metro who are on these committees. There's a technical advisory, there's a technical advisory committee as well as a citizen advisory committee, and so, what we had was basically two different discussions going on, and so, one of the reasons why the meetings are delayed is that you're going to see, um, those representatives from the state and Metro and the county at both meetings, so there's sort of a disconnect between those two meetings. So, there has been a lot of discussion, we'll continue that discussion, and we'll get there as a group.
Yeah. I just think that if we're going to identify urban reserves and all that other kind of stuff, it needs to be a little bit of a deeper look at, at, you know, public facilities than the availability of them.
Yeah.
We hear it time and time again, especially with the annexations, the big subdivisions, and people are not just talking, it's true.
Yeah.
It's really happening, or not happening, as the case may be. So, you know, I mean, do we, do we just kick the can down the road, or do we just, we make a stand and we say, sorry, we're not going to approve anything until we get this fixed?
Let's not talk about any particular application.
I'm not, I'm not.
She's, she's talking, he's talking about it in general.
I'm talking in vague and relevance.
We're not going to talk about it.
And turgid pros. But, um-
All right. Well, remember when we first both started working here?
Right.
They told us from the get-go-
It's like that, yeah, no.
-that 213 was already-
Right.
-close to capacity.
Yeah.
So, you know, and that was, you know, last week.
Well, and, and that discussion needs to be, you know, of, you know, we're not going to build it if, needs to be-
Right.
-uh, adopted by the county and say, that means nothing on Beaver Creek, that means nothing in Mollaw, that means you're not going to get any money from Malino, you're not, you know, because all those-
Yeah.
-you know, until this is fixed, everything upstream is broken.
And it's a pipe dream, you know, I, because I think the only way we'd get is, is if we got money from the feds, period.
We still got the toll road idea.
Yeah, well, there's a toll road idea, and we've been, we've been promised-
Yeah.
-dollars for infrastructure, so let's go after it.
And they're willing to bust loose money for light rail over in La Causa, we go at the time, too.
Yeah. Actually, I did have one, um, update.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I forgot, when you guys are ready, I have one update for you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, we did receive a remand from the Land Use Board of Heals, Heals Hearing regarding the Beaver Creek and 213 to provide some clarity regarding stream protections and-
Historic properties.
Right, yeah, I just missed, say, I didn't know we had an application on 213 and Beaver Creek, because-
No, the Zone Change Comp Plan Amendment.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
The application.
And we're running from various residentials to, um, MUC 2, and we did a trip cap on that. There was, it was appealed for a variety of reasons. We got, uh, a really long decision, which is very good, it addressed, uh, those reasons for the appeal, and the Land Use Board of Appeals upheld the city, and all those, except for there was a remand to provide additional clarification that the natural resource protections applied evenly to residential versus commercial property. So, you'll be seeing that come through.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that if we don't stand up to this and, and just make it known that we're concerned about the, the revenue stream flow here, it's, it's, it's not going to happen.[1676.04]